Good evening, everyone. I will call the March twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I will note that the board did meet an executive session where we discussed one litigation matter related to the paper mill park and one personnel matter that was related to a disability issue. With that being said, Mr. Nice, please call the roll.
Yes, uh, Mr. Altieri.
Here.
Ms. Roberts-Lycap.
Here.
Mr. Partridge.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Ms. Chanlis. Ms. Chanlis is not here this evening. Your solicitor, engineer, and manager are here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nice. We'll now move down to the moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance for this evening's moment of silence. I ask that we remember everyone who tragically lost their life in the West Reading explosion that occurred on Friday. And with that, we'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move down to item five or section five, item five point one. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lycap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to section six, public comment for agenda items only. If there's any members of the public who have anything that they'd like to share or any public comment they would like to provide, I should say, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Um, while we wait for someone to stand up, I will note that the board did receive a letter from thirty-four, excuse me, thirty-five, forty-nine Sawmill Road, Dave and Patty Bassett. And I think it's, uh, nice enough that we should read, Dear Newtown Square Board of Supervisors, we would like to sincerely thank you for working with the residents of Sawmill Road to develop and implement the best solution for the speed issue and the resulting hazards on Sawmill Road. We really appreciate the new stop signs, and we believe they are making a real difference with thanks and appreciation, Dave and Patty Bassett. I will also note that the board did not receive any public comment via the email, nor do we have anything in the public Dropbox. I will also let the letter, let the record reflect that no members of the audience are coming up to provide public comment either. Now move down to section seven, which is the approval of the minutes. I get a motion to approve the minutes from the March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
So moved.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts-Lycap and seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section eight, presentations, eight point one is a presentation from the Parks and Recreation Passport Program, the Gable Park Basketball Court Project, and upcoming community events by the chairman himself, Mr. Wade Pollak. Just make sure your microphone's on there, Wade.
So, um, is there a presentation or? So these are a list of all the events coming up. If you could just go to the next page. These are, thank you. Uh, so these are all the park and stream cleanups that we have. We had one on Saturday and Supervisor Altieri and Russo were there and Solicitor Rich Akora helped clean up with CRC. It was very good. We had a lot of stuff picked up and a large turnout. Uh, this coming or two weeks from now will be the, uh, stream cleanup at Greer Park and Brookside Park from nine to twelve. Uh, and I believe Chief Lung and the police families um, are going to support the, the one at Brookside. The Greer Park will be for the public. We go to the next slide. And we have, uh, bocce courts and horseshoe pits, which will be open in the next several weeks. George is trying to work out signage and a job box and the equipment coming in. Richie now is going to run a league between Marple and us. And so this was all designed by, um, Harry Robinson. He did a really good job. He, he wanted to do a better job than Marple don't sell them that. I think he did. Uh, one of the issues with bocce courts is drainage. And I've checked this out when there's been heavy rain. It drains rather quickly. If you use sand, um, there's a lot of maintenance involved bringing sand in after it rains and, uh, it's rather costly. So this is actually a much better, uh, way to do it. Great job. Uh, Newby Park, uh, one of our members, Caitlin Foy, who's our secretary, um, came up with this. And we, this is our second annual. It'll be this Saturday from one to three, I think it is. And if, if it rains, it'll be held on Sunday. There's, uh, water ice and pretzels provided for the kids who turn out. And we worked with, uh, the Railroad Museum uh, to develop a family fun day. It's for, uh, children of all ages and families. They'll be, uh, the the kids band, the plants will be there forming, uh, twelve to two, a petting zoo. Um, and we, we raised all the funds through local businesses. I think there was thirty-seven hundred dollars total raised. Uh, some of that'll go to pay for the entertainment, but a lot of it'll go to benefit the Railroad Museum. So if you know anyone, please tell them to come out. Uh, the murals, um, so we're working with, uh, Aaron Khan, the secretary, I mean, the, uh, the art teacher from the high school who has a mural club. And she's designed, uh, uh, or the kid, the students, the high school students have designed some murals um, for the court itself. We're trying to make it so it's not offensive to anyone, but it should be, uh, you know, add a lot of color to, uh, to the community. Um, George and I have seen some of the designs, but they haven't finalized anything yet. I believe the timeframe will be, uh, around May before the students get out. And then the, uh, the other, the Drexel Lodge, uh, mural, we didn't have time to add the words that the fifth graders provided to us for, uh, inspiring the community. So I stopped in to run a cat too, and they're either going to use a stencil to design the words that we will stencil onto the walls. Or, um, the owner, Bob Dodge will come out and actually paint the, uh, the words on himself. He's, he's been pretty good. He's come out to a lot of our events and supported us financially, so. So we have, we're working with the library to have kids come out and, and visit some of our, uh, functions and businesses in, in the community. Um, Steve Mustardy has offered donate a soil and seeds and his facility. So the families will come in there and we'll go in back. The kids will plant seeds. Uh, we'll talk to them about, you know, what the benefit is of, uh, growing things themselves. Uh, the fire company, uh, has offered to have, uh, the kids there. George has offered Public Works. We're going to have some vehicles there. And there's going to be a storyteller, puppeteer, a local guide. He does like an African safari, uh, kind of thing and sings and there's some dancing that goes with it. And then the Paper Mill House, the historic commission has offered to, uh, support that as well. And we're going to have, uh, a disc golf event at Drexel Lodge Park. We've been planning this since, uh, twenty twenty, I think it is. It's just never worked out. But George is, is, has all the equipment that we need. We might do it, um, when we have a concert. We're looking for some type of partner. If that doesn't work out, we'll just do it during the concert that we're going to have in September. And so Desiree, who's here tonight, uh, came up with this. She visited a national park and they had, uh, a passport kind of thing where they listed all of the parks. And when you, you visit, you just listed where to visit. So she brought that concept here and we came up with this for our own parks so that it, it'll be given out at the library. And when the kids visit three of our parks, they come back to the library and they get a, a small prize. And Desiree has supplied that, um, herself. So we'll, we'll give this out at, um, our five library events and any other event we have, just to entice the families to come out to our parks and other, uh, facilities. And Sheila Solomon O'Feeney from EAC does a yearly, uh, yoga in the park at Drexel Lodge Park. There's some other events that she has planned exercise wise. And, uh, yoga in the circle is donating the instructors, um, themselves. And help needed, um, so, you know, there's a lot of grants out there, but some of the grants are, you know, much more than we have time to, to fill out. So if we do have a grant writer, if there, if there's any option to have that done, we have some ideas. Um, we'll discuss them in public and then present them to you as well, if there's any opportunity for that. And so one of the other things I was going to ask tonight is, uh, you know, one of the hardest jobs we have is trying to find recreation for high school students. Um, they just don't think we're as cool as we think we are. So we're, we were hoping to maybe. We were hoping to maybe have, uh, two students. I haven't discussed this with the committee in full yet. Well, and if, I just wanted to get a feel for this is something we could do to have high school students come in, you know, maybe part-time and, and sit with us, uh, have, have them to, to, uh, students come in and discuss what might be an option for recreation for them. And, uh, then, you know, come up with something that we would present to you guys.
No, it's not a bad idea, Wade. Um, you know, the school district has student reps that, you know, work with, with the board there, but you know, for the township, that's, that, that's a great idea. Uh, I don't, I don't see why we couldn't. Would you want these folks to be, uh, official members of the committee or you just want, you know, the guidance just to bring them in?
And either way, I don't, I don't know how it would work best. Um, if they could just come in for, you know, maybe a four month period. Attend our meetings for four months and we'll concentrate on recreation for the kids for that, for that age groups specifically.
Do you know of any other townships where they had that set up? I know that there are multiple municipalities that have like a junior, like Thornbury's got a junior supervisor, Ridley Park, uh, the junior council, council person. Um, but I don't know. I've never seen one for a board or commission. So if you know of any, I mean, I don't need the answer now, but if you want to like do some research, you know.
I'll look into that.
We can probably just model it. The board's, um, open to it. We could probably just model it as opposed to reinventing the wheel. Just model it off of that.
Yeah. You know, Lynn, I, I don't even think that it. Rich, just maybe your opinion here, you know, not official committee members, but just, um, can, can the, can the board just go out and recruit a couple of students to, uh, you know, to commit and work with the board? But we don't have to make them official members? Any issue with, with, with us just saying, yeah, go ahead and do it?
I mean, I, I think if you want to officially, I think if you just want to officially recognize. Feel like a part of something, you know, officially, but I don't think having volunteers come and help is a problem as long as you have parent permission.
So basically student volunteers for the parking rec board. Make a motion.
Can we get a motion now?
Yeah, make a motion that we appoint to, uh, student, um, volunteers as, you know, work to, to work with the, uh, the, the parking rec board at, you know, at the direction of the chairman.
I'm going to, I'm, I'm in favor of this, but I guess my question is, are we, are we having the Parks and Rec Board appoint people? Are we appointing people? Like there's, I think.
I think we're letting the Park and Rec Board go get two student volunteers.
Yeah. I mean, whatever the board wants to do.
Rich, you saying the issue?
It's a good idea. They're going to go into recreation. They get some experience.
Or be a teacher.
Yeah.
Well, we'll ask the, uh, school district to possibly appoint the students that way.
Let's take, put official motion. I'll make the official motion for that.
As long as, as long as you get parent permission, you want to call them student liaisons to the Park and Rec Board, you know, something like that.
I, I think, I think we have a form that they could fill out, sign, the parents could sign as well. Yeah, you comfortable?
I don't understand. I don't like the process, to be honest with you. Um, but, you know, I'll do whatever the board wants, wants, uh, wants to do, I think.
Or why don't we come, why don't we, uh?
Yeah, I don't like the.
Why don't we look at it and then come back next meeting?
Okay.
Give you an answer after the next meeting.
Okay.
You know, maybe a little more talk with Steve and, and Rich, just to make sure, put a little more structure around.
We can make that happen. Okay.
That's why I was saying, if you have any other municipalities, we can just model it off of that.
Okay, I'll do some research.
As opposed to just doing it at the fly of the seat of our pants right now.
Okay, great.
And I do believe we have a grant writer in our budget for this year, um, this year currently, correct? Isn't that?
Yeah, we have, we have a, we have a plan for grant writing, so we'll work with them and do that. I'll work with George and we'll walk through how we would do that for them.
And we would discuss everything in public before we came presenting to you. Okay. Thank you.
Glad you're right. Wanted to say something as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to build on Wade's idea. Um, Marple Township has a, I believe it's the Marple Youth Civic group. Um, it's a group of Marple Township, uh, residents who are also Marple Newtown High School students. And they have done some research, Wade, on what they would like in a park in case the, uh, where the Dongguanella property is, if that gets developed into a park. So I think they might be, they have like a lot of research with pictures and everything already done that we could possibly take a look at what they have. And, um, maybe still get our own liaisons to run that by them, but there is a lot of research that's available, though. Thank you.
And.
Desiree, thanks a lot for your, yeah, for your, uh, program with the, with the, uh, students in the parks. I mean, that was a great idea.
Sure. Thank you. I'm, I'm really.
Also funding the gifts.
Yeah.
Just your, uh, name, address, just so they can have that for.
Uh, Desiree Tomasco, thirty-five, thirty-six, Sawmill Road.
A member of the Parks and Rec.
Yes.
Thank you.
Love the school.
And a member of the school board. Um, all right, Wade, thank you. Any questions for Wade or Desiree? Perfect.
Great idea.
All right, well now move down to reports, nine point one, report from the police department. People, do you have anything to add or supplement? Thank you very much. Uh, report from the fire department, Assistant Chief Young, do you have anything to add or supplement? Thank you very much, sir. Report from the Public Works Director, Mr. Sharr, do you have anything to add or supplement?
My name is Tanya. I am forty-two. I'm the mother of nine kids. I think I waited this long to get Botox cosmetic because I take like no time for my family. My kids are sports kids.
Can you?
We're always from one activity to another. What'd you say?
Um, so Mr. Sharr, do you have nothing to add or supplement? You're not interested in botox? You know, like a million bucks. Uh, George, I just wanted to say thank you for your assistance on Saturday, having the bathrooms open at Drexel Lodge Park. Um, and then more importantly, uh, packing everything up. I believe that the, uh, the group that was there, as Mr. Pollack said, uh, was a good committed group. We had around, I think a thousand pounds, according to Mike McGraw, that we logged out of Drexel Lodge. So it was a good, good event. Uh, report from the building codes officer, Mr. Rescheck, do you have anything to add or supplement?
I do not.
Thank you very much. Report from the finance director, Ms. Yvonne Ballack. Nothing to add. Report from the library director, Ms. Carusa is not here. Nothing to add or supplement. Mr. Pollack, do you have anything you want to add or supplement? All right. Leisure Services, Mr. Anhao, anything to add or supplement? Thank you very much. And then we'll move, uh, township engineer, Mr. Mr. Johnson, do you have anything to add or supplement?
I do not.
Yeah. Mr. Nice, the floor is yours.
I always have.
Keep the roll.
I have, I have, I have a couple of quick things. First of all, um, just so the board is aware, we're going to be doing the LSI, uh, sidewalk meetings on the April eleventh at three PM and six PM. It's the same meeting both times. We're not, but we're just opening up two different times for people to come in and, um, make statements. We did send notices out to five hundred feet within that area, any, any homes within that area. Uh, and we're also putting it out on the website and on the, uh, Facebook and hopefully by word of mouth, we'll get people out for that, uh, to weigh in. Um, second thing I have, we just got in today a, a list of, uh, a project that Pico's going to do. They're going to be installing new conduit. Uh, it's all new underground electrical cable. Uh, they supposedly are doing directional boring. Um, I say supposedly because that was the last project. They told us they were do, doing directional boring and ended up having to do some direct digging. Uh, it's over in the Greek Country Drive area on the cul-de-sacs of, uh, Bradford Terrace, Clark, uh, Drive, Clayton Place, uh, Decks, Denford, uh, Gartley and, uh, the other ones that are along there. Um, also along Earl's Lane, Martins, uh, Roberts and Sawmill. Uh, they anticipate being in the grass, not cutting road surfaces. Um, but we also know sometimes that's not how it works, but that work is expected to begin, uh, April twenty-third. I mean, I'm sorry, April of twenty twenty-three, um, and will be completed this fall. They're also doing a similar project in Radnor Township uh, in similar locations along Earl's, Goshen, Hansel and Lakeview Roads. Uh, so just, but those are supposed to be a hundred percent in Radnor. I just want everybody to kind of be aware. Uh, we did get our, uh, we did get our liquid fuels money from the county or our county aid allocation. I will make note that it was less than we had been getting. Uh, in the past, we've been getting, uh, somewhere around seventeen, almost eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, then we, that was what we were receiving before twenty twenty-two. This year we received fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four. Um, we, I believe the county's taking a portion of that and doing projects that they're doing. So, uh, that's, that's what's going on.
What was the number before? I'm sorry.
Seventeen thousand, nine fifty-five.
Seventeen nine fifty-five.
And now we're getting fourteen, three sixty-four. Uh, last year we used it for line painting. This year we intend on using it for road paving.
So projects are the county, is the county using it for?
I, I don't know.
They didn't tell us?
They didn't tell us. They just told us they were taking a portion of it.
Got it.
I know they're supposedly working on the bridge here in town. So, or, you know, the one on Paper Mill.
How can the county take it if it's earmarked for us?
Well, because it's liquid fuels dollars that come into the county and it's there, they have the option of sharing that with the municipalities. So.
As an example, Montgomery County does not distribute that money out, um, like Delaware County does. They keep it for their use.
Really?
Yeah.
But we're just lucky to get. Quiet.
What are they doing with Paper Mill Road?
On Paper Mill Road, there's the bridge.
Yeah.
It goes, that section.
Yep.
Uh, they're working on replacing that. I'm not sure. Do you know when that's going to happen?
I don't know exactly. They, the last thing we heard from them was kind of like a final design of it, but no indication of when the, the beginning construction.
We'll work on that one too. They, they own that one. They don't, we, we own the other one.
Well, they can take all fourteen thousand. We'll give it to them.
Yeah, really. They can have the whole bridge.
Perfect. All right. Anything else, Mr. Nice? Any questions for the township manager? Seeing that we'll move down to section ten.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I did have one last thing.
Yep.
And, uh, I just wanted to let you know, um, Ellis Preserve, we, you all had agreed for a sewer planning module that they were actually going to do and go out and try to, uh, bring back some, uh, EDUs that were not used in another section of town. Uh, they've been working with DEP. Uh, DEP, I, I believe has set up that they don't need to do that based on the usage that's on their site. And so they're just moving forward with that. I just wanted you to know I'll be signing those documents unless I have any objection from the board.
It's been kosher with the municipal authority as well, or whatever they have the oversight on.
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Any questions for the township manager? Seeing that we'll move down to section ten, payments, ten point one. Can I get a motion to, to approve the one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollar escrow release payment to Lewis Rosenthal, twenty Harrison Drive for completed grading project?
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lycap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ten point two, can I get a motion approving the following refund payments for canceled events that were scheduled and paid for at the Drexel Lodge? One hundred and seventy-five dollar refund to Nancy Hartley Billham and one hundred and seventy-five dollar refund for Irina Heller.
Some.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lycap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section eleven, bills, eleven point one. I have reviewed the bills and I will make a motion to approve the bills on check register A dated March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three totaling one hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and five cents.
Second.
Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section twelve, new business, twelve point one. I get a motion authorizing the staff and solicitor to work with the municipal authority on the grease trap ordinance rewrite.
Oh, for approval.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lycap. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Nice, pretty self-explanatory. I'm guessing you don't have anything to add?
Yeah, ju- just the one thing that we're looking at is potentially putting in there, uh, that the municipal authority would be the one that's actually uh, enforcing it versus the township. And so because they're the ones that are dealing with the responsibilities, that's what we're looking.
Got it.
Cause it's into their system, correct?
Yeah, they're, 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 they're not, before, when the grease trap ordinance was originally written um, back in two thousand fourteen, I believe it was, maybe sixteen in that timeframe, uh, we were still doing the operations as the township. We since, we're no longer doing the operations, they're doing the operations. And so it just makes sense that they have that authority, but we have to give them that authority.
Okay.
And so there'll, there'll also be a little bit more detail.
There'll still be the ultimate enforcement authority, but they would be that, they could write the notices.
Understood. Any other comments from the board? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Point two, can I get a motion authorizing the staff to move forward with the purchase of replacement vehicles for the code and administrative, its administration departments as budgeted? There's a second.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lycap. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Nice, do you have anything you want to add? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twelve point three, can I get a motion approving the hiring of Dandelion's Digital, a third-party communications agency to assist with the website redesign at a cost of four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars?
So moved.
Second. Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts-Lycap, seconded by Supervisor Russo. Is there any board discussion, Mr. Nice?
Yes, um, so we've been meeting with this, uh, organization. They have a, uh, they are, uh, beta testers for our website platform. Um, and they have been working with lots of municipalities, uh, in their, um, we get to redo our website every so often. Uh, this would give us some feedback and some direction to help us make our website more friendly. Uh, one of the comments that we get when people go to their websites, they can't find things. And so we want to make sure that that's possible. Um, that they can do that. And we also want to, this is a good opportunity for us to kind of test drive this organization for potential future um, uh, work with the township.
Any other questions for the township manager? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twelve point four, can I get a motion approving, uh, excuse me, using six thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars from the playground equipment fund to replace the two sliding boards at Brookside Park?
Move.
Second.
Uh, motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lycap. Is there any board discussion? Pretty self-explanatory, Mr. Nice, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's what it is. I just want you to understand that we were actually, we, you know, we set aside twenty-five thousand dollars towards playground equipment replacement. We would be taking part of that to do this purchase.
Understood. Any other comments or questions? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twelve point five, can I get a motion approving the proposal from Menoni for a roof assessment and report preparation associated with the municipal complex totaling three thousand, five hundred dollars?
So moved.
There's, motion was made by Supervisor Roberts-Lycap, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Nice, do you want to add anything?
This is just doing an initial assessment, kind of determining what it would take to get us a bid documents uh, on the, on our roof that we've been trying to get replaced for a couple of years.
Let me ask you a question. So when they, when you guys, well, when you guys, when the building was redone, did they not do the roof?
We did new roof over the police department. We did not do new roof over this, uh, well, that section of the building, um, where, uh, the second floor is, uh, because at that time the roof was I think we figured about just at fifteen years old.
Got.
Um, we have since had problems with that roof. There's shingles that are coming off. Uh, so now we're having to take a look at it.
And so what does this, so is it? How far are we covering the library section as well? Or are we just?
Well, the library, so if you think about our roof, the second story is a shingled piece, and that's up above where the offices are. We go pretty much back, uh, almost to kind of where you see the dividing line here in this room, between this room and the back room. Um, a little bit further back that way, but about there. And then, so that section the, the library has an additional section of area that's actually a uh metal seam roof. And so, yes, it's over the library area, but it's not the whole section over the library area more. If you think about really what's upstairs, it's over all of the second floor of the building.
Got it. So how old is the new part on the police department side?
Four years? Four or five, huh? Four or five years.
With, with a twenty-year warranty?
On the police section, um, I can't remember if it's a twenty or thirty. I'd have to go back and look.
So it has a warrant.
Yeah. I just don't remember off the top of my head what year's shingles were.
So are we having, or will we have three different age roofs, roofs up there, or will we, I guess what I'm just, like, I don't want to have to have us fix just certain sections all the time. And that's four years old with thirty-year warranty or twenty-year warranty. And it is what it is, but are we covering everything else that we need to cover for that? We're not doing another section of roof in five years or in, you know.
So we're taking, looking at it as an evaluation to make sure we do what the, the right amount. That's part of the reason for the thirty-five hundred is to do the full evaluation. There is a flat section of the roof, um that's kind of sits right behind us, right? I mean, it's, it's right back there. Uh, that's probably not as big as this room here, um, that that was done. You know, when that was done, George, it, it's, it's probably a little bit older, but we're not having any problems with it. Um, so we, we had not necessarily intended to do anything there.
Okay.
And that's not shingled. It's a, it's a flat uh tarred roof, uh, tarred, right, membrane. Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twelve point six, can I get a motion to approve authorizing Panoni to do a survey of township property on Stony Brook Boulevard?
Second.
Which was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Partridge, Mr. Nice?
Yeah, this is a, this is a triangle piece of property that we have over on Stony Brook Boulevard. Uh, we've gotten a couple uh concerns about some uh some issues over at that location. So we would just want to know exactly what's township property before we start taking on projects that need to be done.
Understood. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section thirteen, old business. There is no old business. Section fourteen, land development approval. This has been tabled. Um, and will be on the agenda in a month, I believe. We will revisit that and then we'll move down to section fifteen, board comment. I just have two things I want to note. Um, one, it's again talking about the CRC Creek Cleanup. I want to thank George, uh, Mr. Sakura, Wade was there. Um, Sheila Sullivan Feeny, Supervisor Russo. I'm trying to think of everybody who was involved in the township, John Custer, uh, Dana Altabelli. Altogether, we collected around one thousand pounds of trash. Uh, it was a great event. It was uh, they always are. Mike brought his daughter and a bunch of her friends. So we had Notre Dame girls helping out, getting involved in the community, which was great. Uh, and for anyone who missed it, there's another opportunity on Saturday, this Saturday from nine to eleven-thirty, uh, we're going to be meeting here at the township building. And we're going to be taking care of all the trees that were planted over Gable Park. The Gable Park, they're calling it the Gable Park Native Tree Care, where we're going to mulch and clean around the cages and things like that. And the last thing I want to say is that last week I was at a zoning hearing board meeting in Lower Providence Township, which is where Mr. Lafayette is now in residence. He says hello to everyone. They seem to be treating him pretty well over there. Um, but it was, it was good to, to touch base with him. That's all I have. Mr. Partridge, you report a comment?
Yep.
Supervisor Russo? Supervisor Robert Seikap? We'll move down to public comment. If there's any members of the public, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Let the record reflect, there is no public comment. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.